All right. I want to welcome everybody to the January 10th meeting of the Des Moines City Council. It's 4:30 and we're going to start in just a moment, but prior to our beginning this evening, we're going to have an invocation. We would ask that those who would participate with us to stand at this time, and the invocation will be given by our own council member Christine Hensley.
I'd like to read a little excerpt tonight from St. Francis of Assisi. "Where there is hatred in this world, let us bring love; where there is injury pardon, where there is despair hope; where there is darkness light, and where there is sadness joy. May we always try to understand, not just be understood; hope to console as well as to be consoled; try to love, not to just be loved. For it is in giving that we receive, in serving others that we find our deepest fulfillment, in setting aside our focus on self that we find the true meaning of life." And in these times of all of the sadness that we've had, I'd like us to have a moment of silence in respect for those individuals in Arizona. Amen. Thank you.
Pass the clerk take roll, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
That's the best part of it.
The first item on the agenda is to approve the recommendation for a mayor pro tem. I first want to thank Bob Mahaffey for his work this last year as mayor pro tem. Bob, thanks for stepping in at every possible opportunity and did a great job. Thank you. For 2011, I would like to place a recommendation for our fourth ward council member, Brian Meyer. So if we...
I'll move it.
We've got a motion in a second?
You don't get to say anything.
When do I get the nuclear launch codes?
Christine. We're working with you, Brian. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or amended. Can we have a motion, please?
Move.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Item three is approving the consent agenda. Tonight, those items are three through 46. These are items that are enacted as a single vote and will be voted on that way unless a city council member or someone from the audience pulls one of these items for additional discussion or clarification. Tonight, item five, I, the mayor, and council member Moore vote no. Item 18, council member Moore votes no. Item 43, council member Hensley wishes to speak. And item 44, council member Moore registers a conflict of interest.
Mayor?
Yes.
Number 18, I meant to speak on that. I didn't mean to vote no on it.
All right. He means to speak. Okay, so we're going to speak on 18 and 43. Are there any other items on the consent agenda again this evening, items three through 46, that anyone would like to speak on tonight? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Move.
It's been moved.
Seven, yes?
Okay, that takes us to item 18. Council member Moore wishes to speak on that. Item 18 is a communication from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the market district plan. Council member Moore.
This project, the proposal on it, has really brought a lot of attention to people around town, especially in the East Village. Recently, I was in Philadelphia and I was able to go to the reading. Terminal Market, which is an indoor market, and I began speaking with other people about the potential of an indoor/outdoor market. I would encourage, Rick, if possible, to put together a group of staff members and start taking a look at this because, as we know, the majority of this area where the Market Square would be is city property, and once we're ready to move public works out of there, it'd be great if we're ready to start digging dirt and building that market. I think that that could be the anchor for the district and really spur some development down there.
Mr. Moore, councilman, it's a great comment, and I think you're right on point. That's one of the benefits about having a plan, and you're correct, it does encompass areas where the city owns a lot of property, and with all the investment that we've made and others in Southeast Connector, we want to take advantage of that. So appreciate your point very much, Mr. Moore, and we will pursue it as you suggest.
Thank you. Move 18.
Seven, yes?
Next item is item 43. Item 43 is an exception to the procurement ordinance competitive bidding requirement for good cause with Nestingen Inc., Carl Nestingen, president, for a database programming services to replace an existing database for use by the police department for $52,000. Council communication number 11-001. Mrs. Hensley.
This was a question I asked. I did get some information here. I'd just like to expand upon that a little bit because it is a, we didn't go out for bid, is my understanding. The number of hours that are actually anticipated and who were some of the other contacts? I know in talking with the city manager, there's, the recommendation is based upon the fact that this would be cheaper, but he's also been an independent contractor for the city for the last 10 years, correct?
Correct.
Do we have a policy that precludes somebody bidding or working when we have, they've had such an arrangement with the city? How many hours do we expect?
Mrs. Hensley, I'm going to ask Alan to comment on it in terms of the procurement process here. I am not aware that we have a policy on it unless Alan advised. Contrary, it is a situation that does not arise very often in terms of this particular situation. And I will say, I had concerns about the same item for perhaps the same reasons you have, Mrs. Hensley, and I did ask the staff to go through a fairly exhaustive review of justifying why this was a good decision. They've done that to my satisfaction, but obviously you've got similar concerns. And Alan, if you would please address it, and then also perhaps police and IT may want to join in as well. But Alan, if you'd respond.
Thank you. Alan McKinley, deputy city manager. Just as a, we do not have a policy in place as asked, but in the procurement process, as a department, in this case, both IT and police department proceed to acquire services, the procurement division of the finance department does serve as an independent third party, so that is all reviewed as far as their requests and the information that's provided regarding the services that are desired. In this case, because of the intimate knowledge of the consultant in our system already in place, the nature of, I think it's a six-month window needing it to be ready by the end of June, that review led our procurement division to conclude that it was the most feasible and cheapest method to get this product up and running for the city.
So what's the timeline, and do we have an hours estimate?
Sheriff, the police?
Mayor, council. My name is Arnie Porith. I'm the new planning and budget director for the Des Moines Police Department. I don't have a finite number of hours. The project was estimated to be about $40,000 for the initial, getting the system up and running, and then that also includes a three-year agreement to maintain the system, to assure that it's running properly.
Okay. So $40,000 for the actual upgrade of the agreement, and then the rest is for the three-year?
That's correct.
Okay. I'll move. Thank you.
Seven, yes?
All right, that concludes the consent agenda. It fixes to item 47. Item 47 is a request that I have to speak quickly, is a follow-up discussion to review the possibility of granting certificates of public convenience and necessity for taxicabs on a probationary basis. We've had sort of ongoing discussions on this, and I thought it'd be appropriate at least to have the city manager and our legal department maybe prepare an ordinance that would meet that and then present to the council for open discussion on that if it seems appropriate. Anybody?
Question?
Yes.
So I guess just going back to all the debate and the discussion we had previously, do we have any additional information as to how that's working? Is there a need for it? And I did talk with the police chief, and I did talk with the representatives from City Cab, and there seems to be just some discrepancy because I'd been given an email that indicated that they were down in Court Avenue, working to pick up passengers New Year's Eve night. I forwarded the information to the city, to the police chief, and she was talking with the officers, and they're saying, no, that that was not the case. So I guess we need to get resolution to that because of...
I understand, but I'm not talking about a specific company at the moment. We were presented with a, with a situation, it'd been suggested by some of the members of council, that there might be an appropriate way because we have probationary periods for individual drivers. I'm not suggesting that we're discussing City Cab or Cosmic Cab at the moment, but I certainly would want to know all those details if someone were to apply for that on a, because they couldn't meet the criteria otherwise on a probationary basis.
And going back to the whole question of necessity? Is that what you're talking about?
Right.
Okay. I'm very comfortable with that.
Okay.
Mayor, are you looking at this also so that if they do obtain a license and then there's problems down the road, we can bring them back on a probationary period also that way? Not just from the initial application, but if they receive their license somewhere and there's a potential problem, that we could actually bring them back on probation?
That would be a possibility. I hadn't thought of that, but we could discuss that as well.
Does legal have some thought?
Excuse me. We took a look at doing that, and there's a little bit of process work on that to make sure that it fits with what we have right now. As you know, Mrs. Hensley, we've granted probationary status to taxicab drivers and others over a period of time. So it's probably, whether or not you ever choose to use it is different than the question of whether or not it's appropriate to have it as available if you like to use it.
So Mayor, what you're looking at is new applicants, so they come in, we have some questions, we might grant a probationary period of time, then review it, see whether or not we're going to grant a full license or withdraw their application.
Or make that option available to us if we so, because up to now, we haven't had that even as an option, although it seemed like it was something that we were at least open to discussion earlier, but this would give us the opportunity to at least have that discussion, not just for individuals, but for a, an applicant to meet.
I think that gives us another possibility to address some of these if we have questions.
Right.
I think that's a good idea.
So have we done any analysis then? Do we have, I know that there's some third-party analysis on necessity out there, but I'd really like to know with the addition of the previous, the action that we took previously, has that been, and I say this as a negative or a positive, not against the company, but be on the question of necessity and the impact? How are we evaluating that?
Mrs. Hensley, can I, if I could just interrupt you, Mr. Mayor. I can't answer your question this evening. What I'd like to do is if the council, or even if the council doesn't approve the motion this evening, I want to prepare a report for you and get it back to you, which is more thorough than I'm going to be able to be this evening. There hasn't been a huge amount of time, but we can provide the information that's available to us, and we'll do that following this meeting within the next week or two.
Thank you.
Just sort of an item to tack on, and maybe our, the police chief or others would know, but am I hallucinating, or are there cab companies out there with signs on there that I've never even seen before that I'm now seeing on the streets of Des Moines? I mean...
I think you're accurate.
Is that because they come from the suburbs?
And they drop them off?
I have no idea where they're coming from.
In?
I've just, I just never even, I saw, I thought what appeared to be a cab to me with a name on it, I had never heard before. So it would be interesting to know if there's any...
We got five kids. We're running all around the city, Mayor.
How many of them are driving?
Two now.
All right. Could we have a motion?
Can I, can I just make sure before I vote? I think when we, when we talked about this last time, we asked the city manager to kind of go through a process to, to kind of clarify the necessity issue, to look at studying that or making recommendations on, on how to deal with that. Am I dreaming that? Is that in the works at all?
Mr. Coleman, you never dream about anything, so I don't think so. There was a follow-up report that you asked for. It's not prepared right now, and I don't think it was due for a bit, but we can, we'll prepare information for you.
So you want a motion to go forward and come back?
And have something put on the table that we can openly discuss.
And I would also like to include the mechanism as to how we were going to ensure that all potential cab companies shared in the cost for the taxicab, I guess they're called stewards?
Yeah.
At the airport down on Court Avenue was another piece of that as well.
We'll report back on that as well.
In the airport.
That's on our list.
So that's the motion.
All right.
Seven, yes?
Okay. Mr. Welsole, it looks like withdrew his request to speak. It is before 5 o'clock, so let's quickly, which are the hearing items?
Through 54.
Through 54?
Yep.
Let's go to 55. Item 55 is approving a receipt of a staff report regarding the relocation or expansion needs of existing pawnbroker license holders. Council communication number 11-018. Mr. Manager, I'd like to have you give us a quick update on that work.
Actually, if I could have Mike Ludwig talk about it a bit, that would be helpful, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Michael Ludwig, planning administrator. At the December 6th hearing on the ordinance on pawn shops and payday lenders, you'd asked staff to look at the idea of how to try and work with some of the existing pawnbroker businesses that may have expressed interest in possibly relocating their existing businesses. We did look at that, and the recommendation for you tonight in the report is, is just that if they have an interest in relocating, we would advise them to seek a, some sort of agreement or contract on the property they have interest in, and then seek relief from the zoning board of adjustment to any separation requirements. Currently under the code, if the board of adjustment approves that variance to a separation requirement, there's a report that comes back to the council, but there is no report that comes back if there's a denial of their request. And I think since the council had expressed some interest in working with those property owners, our recommendation is, under either circumstance, approval or denial by the board of adjustment, that we would make a report back to you on the results of their attempt to go before the board of adjustment, and then if they do not obtain a satisfactory decision, the council at that time could consider a possible ordinance amendment if that was appropriate. But at this time, it was just, there were too many unintended consequences of changing the ordinance, just speculatively at this point.
Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, I, council members, I spoke on several occasions with Tom Friend, who has a pawn shop at 1135 Army Post Road, and was looking to try to kind of figure out what he's going to do with the ordinance, and I don't see him here tonight, so I'll just tell you, the conversation that he and I had last Friday, his intent at that time was to come, and basically to say, well, as you know, he wasn't wild about having an ordinance overall that ended up changing the rules for pawnbrokers. Still, he appreciates very much that you are willing to take a look at his situation and give him an option that should work out well for him in the future. I explained pretty much what Mr. Ludwig told you before, and that, that at least I thought, from our council meeting on the 6th, that the sentiment of the council was that if, if something didn't happen that we really expected to with a variance, that the council would be open to at least taking a look at the, at the ordinance again. So that's, that was our discussion.
And is he the only one that we're really having ongoing conversations with?
I had, I did not receive another phone call. Now, I had, I had had...
One other individual, it was me.
Yeah.
Jay, and I'll pardon myself from, I've forgotten Jay's last name, but Jay has a pawn shop in the, on East University, somewhere...
About 20, 24 and 25.
Right.
And he had been here, and he spoke, yeah.
He has spoken a couple of times. He had a, he had a three-year lease, as I understand it, and I think I would end up communicating the same thing to him, that if, if he has an issue, he can take a look at using that same process.
Any thoughts? If not, could we have a motion to receive staff report?
I'll move.
Move.
Seven, yes?
Item 56 is a recommendation from the city council employee subcommittee regarding the appointment of an interim city attorney. Who wants to speak to that, Ms. Coleman?
I can, I can start. About a month and a half ago, when the mayor and the council learned of Mr. Bergman's absence, the mayor called a meeting of the city personnel committee. We talked a little bit about opportunities and what we would need to do in an interim position. I'm sure the city attorney could articulate the responsibilities of the city attorney in our code and in state law, so we need to have somebody in place that is responsible for those things until the position is held. And the mayor, on the council's behalf, met with Mark Godwin, and we fully support his recommendation. I think all of us have had a chance to, to work with Mr. Godwin, and I'd let the mayor share any thoughts you have. You really did the work. We were just the placeholder on the agenda here.
But I think that everybody knows Mark, and Mark, we certainly respect and appreciate all the work that you've done for the city through the years, and I think you're in my, at least, initial conversations. You are going to fill in as was recommended by the committee as our interim city attorney, and we look forward to that and know that you'll do an outstanding job. And I hope that if any of the other council members or committee members have any thoughts, I'm counting on full support of everyone. So Mark, short of a vote, we look forward to working with you.
Absolutely.
He knows something about trees, too. You know that?
Mark did want to stress interim, I know that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll move it, and thanks, Mark. We're looking forward to working with you. And just a quick note, the way we've advertised the position, this is the time where applications were due, and our HR team and others are looking at that and helping us with it, so we should know more later this week in terms of a timeframe. Whatever process we go through will include all of us.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Seven, yes?
Thank you, and congratulations, I think, Mark. We have two extra items that I think that we can deal with. I asked to have put on a recommendation item, extra item one, from me to appoint Diane C. Muns to the Civil Service Commission, seat number two, for a four-year term, which she is going to fill out, which expires on April 1st, and she's agreed to the additional four-year term, which will commence on, on the 2nd and go to April 1st, 2015.
I'll move. Excellent recommendation.
Yeah.
Seven, yes?
Secondly, we had a need to fill in an alternate to the Region 4, Des Moines-Urbendale, the Des Moines area Regional Transit Authority Commission for a four-year term commencing January 10th, 2011, to expire January 10th, 2015. And my recommendation for that position is Matt Anderson, a person that is well-known to those of us on the city council and many city staff as well, who happens to live in the appropriate area.
I'll move that as well and take note, Mr. Bergman. He's leaving the end of January, so he's fair game.
That's exactly right. Chris?
Seven, yes?
All right. Let's circle back around and go to the first hearing item, and we'll say that we started this meeting at 4:58, and if someone is here and wants to come back and give us some additional information, hopefully this won't be an issue that's problematic, but first item is item 49, "On the Conveyance of Underground Electric Line Easement on City-Owned Property Located at 4700 Grand Avenue to Mid-American Energy Company for $1." Is there anyone here to comment on that particular item?
Mayor, I'll move it if there's nobody here.
All right.
And if somebody comes later, I'd be glad to reconsider it.
Okay. Any discussion? All right.
Seven, yes?
Item 50 is on a request from Jerry's Homes, represented by Jeffrey Grubb, to amend the Pearl Lake PUD conceptual plan on the property located at 3,009 East Peyton Avenue to allow the revision to the street layout and reduction in single-family lots without an increase in the number of residential units. A is a first consideration of the ordinance above. And that's it. Is there anyone here to speak on this item?
Good evening, Mayor County, members of the Des Moines City Council. My name is Jeff Grubb with Jerry's Homes, 3301 106th Circle in Urbandale. Back in 2001, the city came to us and was ready to put in the last detention basin for the Easter Lake series of ponds, which included a pond that went within our property. We worked with the city on the 38 acres that we owned between Army Post and Peyton Avenue and the 3,000 block of Peyton, and that left us with three individual parcels kind of surrounding the pond. The original concept- Okay, the original concept, again, had the pond in the center, and then left three parcels that Jerry's Homes owns around the pond. We are currently just south of Easter Lake, is it, Easter Lake South Platte 2, right here. Our concept plan called for 23 individual lots. We have an existing home on the property up on the northwest corner. I'm going to move another map in here. And, you know, since a lot of time has gone by, and our original concept hasn't come forward as far as a platte. We've had somebody interested in purchasing the home. We've sold it to them on a rent-to-own contract. Since, you know, again, a lot of time has gone by, they would like to purchase it, and we would like to sell it. The plan originally was to have a cul-de-sac right in this area that would allow for two lots to maintain the home, and the original concept showed six lots right along Peyton Avenue as well, with driveways going out onto Peyton. What we did is we went, hired CEC, Civil Engineering Consultants, to identify where the buildings are, the current existing driveway, the septic field, and we drew a boundary around that, maintaining all of the side yard requirements and creating a lot that we could create a platte of survey to convey title to these people. And that's what our attempt is at this point, to get them the home that they want. By doing that, we've created a little different layout. The street originally was running along the pond, and then turned back to the west with the cul-de-sac at the end. The lots, again, are the same number that we had previously. In working with the city staff, we have actually increased our design standards and have accepted higher square footages and additional architectural standards. Again, like I said, the prior plan had six lots that were backing out onto Peyton, which is a little bit busier road. We don't have any lots now backing out onto Peyton. We took this to Plan and Zoning Commission several weeks ago, presented the plan as shown right here, and got unanimous approval. And we would like to ask, again, for the City Council approval of our new concept for this particular site.
Any questions, council? Anybody in the audience want to speak on this item? Ryan?
I will move, is it 50? My computer's not working.
Fifty.
Fifty and 58.
May I make one additional request?
Yep.
There is no opposition, and if the council would accept the waiving of second, third reading, if that would be possible?
Sure, I'll waive second and third.
Motion is to include the waiving.
I'll make motion to waive second and third.
I think under the circumstances, if you got unanimous approval from Plan and Zoning, I think it's a good move to get started.
Seven, yes?
Yep.
Thank you.
Item 51 is on a request from Sutton Hill Residential Cooperative to rezone at 2,080 King Avenue from R6 planned residential development to R180, one-family residential to PUD planned unit development, and approval of the PUD conceptual plan, and to continue to July 11th, 2011 at 5:00 PM, Council Communication Number 11-024. That's a, I guess, a motion to continue. Anyone here to speak on this item?
I'll move.
Seeing no one, the item's been moved.
Mr. Mayor, I just saw Mr. Friend come into the council chambers, and we already took action on that item, just so he's not sitting here on the pond broker, the recommendation that we made. Bruce?
Right, yeah, if I could just mention, Tom, I pretty much reiterated our conversation last Friday afternoon, your not being wild about having the ordinance in the first place, but under the circumstances, your appreciation to the council for giving you some availability to have some options in the future, and we went through the process on it, so.
Sure.
Yep. Come ahead, we like thanks.
I don't, didn't like it, I still don't like it, but I guess it's better than nothing. And I do appreciate you working with me and understanding the circumstances that it would have hurt me, but if I'm able to work with you guys and you're working with me, it's the best of both worlds. And I do appreciate it, appreciate you understanding me and all that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I got to say.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item 52 is on a lease of a portion of the Guzman Building and the Birdland Marina, and a portion of the overlooked terrace at Gray's Lake Park to the Des Moines Rowing Club through December 31st of 2013, with up to two three-year renewal options for $8,851 annually, Council Communication Number 11-010. Anyone in the audience to speak on this? Seeing none?
If none, I would move that, and it's great to see the rowing clubs up and down the Des Moines River there, and working out on various times, so I will move that.
Seven, yes?
Item 53 is on the vacation of various city-owned right-of-way parcels and conveyance of said parcels and additional excess city-owned property located near I-235 and Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway to Hatch Development Group, LLC, to be used for infill redevelopment of single-family affordable homes, $51,500 conveyance of properties 1 to 6, it looks like. Item 1 is 1120 Martin Luther King Parkway, $6,000. Item 2 is a district number at the northwest corner of the intersection of Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway and Atkins Street for $6,500. Item 3 is 1005 Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway and a district number 030, and a whole lot more numbers after that, at the southeast corner of the intersection of Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway and Atkins Street for $7,500. 4 is 1037 18th Street and District Parcel Number at the northeast corner of the intersection of 18th Street and Day, $7,500. 5 is a district parcel at the northwest corner of the intersection of 16th Street and Day Street for $7,500. And 6 is a district parcel, and since there's no further description, I'll read this one, 030 slash 03265 dash double oh one dash 000 for $16,500. Council Communication Number 11-20. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above on the vacation of the properties, and B is the final consideration, the ordinance above. It's requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item?
Mayor County and members of the council, my name is Carol Bauer. I am a consultant for Hatch Development Corporation at 1312 Locust Street in Des Moines, Iowa. We are the applicant for these properties. We have selected the right-of-way properties that the city owns in these different neighborhoods. They are throughout the MLK area, some in Sherman Hill, and near the MLK brickstones. These are the Iowa Finance Authority Low Income Housing Tax Credit Projects for Single-Family Homeownership, which we think is very important to Des Moines and to Iowa. This is a new program for Iowa. It's been presented in Omaha, and I think there's maybe one small project in Davenport. We will work with the Rose Program, so it will be rent-to-own for 15 years. At the end of the 15 years, there will be homeownership. We will supervise them, we will work with the homeowners. A portion of their rent will be put in an equity fund that will go towards the mortgage. So these will be for people who maybe have the down payment, or I'm sorry, not the down payment, but they have the mortgage available, but they don't have the down payment money available to buy the homes. There's, we've selected the gray stones because, do you have the screen on? They are very similar to the gray stones at Wrigley, in the Wrigley area of New York, or of Chicago. They're 20 feet wide, 40 feet long, and two and a half stories. They expand about 27 feet high. We did take off the rooftop garden, so what you see, it looks like a chimney, was the approach to the rooftop, but we have reduced the size of the building by getting rid of that. They're very similar to the MLK brickstones as you enter them, and that's why we like them in the area of the brickstones, which are all rental. These will be rent-to-own. We have, we have six sites selected. We did have seven, and we are still interested in the seventh site, but there is possibly a water main problem in that area, so we're looking at that. If, in fact, we can get the water company to identify where that water line is, we will pursue that site as well, and that is on Day Street. So 1120 is the first site that we're looking at, and if you would like to look at it on the screen, I can put it up. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. These are, as I said, single-family, so we are taking a site that may not be appropriate for single-family use, and we're splitting it. So the width of the lot is 25 feet wide to 30 feet wide. The homes are 20 feet wide, so we're asking for a variance, which we went through P and Z with, and we will build single-family. They will have their own specific lots. There will not be a multifamily project built on many of these. There might be four that will be duplexes, but they will be individually owned. So 1120 is the first one. Is there anyone who would like to speak on that? Okay. The second site is, well, it's the lot south of 1110, and this is on the corner of Atkins and MLK. We can pull that in. And we are proposing three on that site that we have gone through the city planning process with, and this is what they are recommending for that.
Carol, did you get, just to remind all of us, you got full support of P and Z on all these, did you not?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Yeah. If you want me to go through all of them, I certainly can.
That's a question I want to ask the council. I'm really comfortable with the recommendation from P and Z, and unless anybody has some concern over something.
The one that didn't have an address, the last one, item number six, if you could skip down to that one.
Certainly.
Okay, let's go to that.
Okay, that is 2003 Laner Street, and that has been one that we've had several meetings on. We do have a letter of support from the direct neighbors on Laner Street. Let me put that one up. Find it. There are a few here.
While you're looking through that, Carol, could you also discuss where you're at in the neighborhood association?
Yes, we've had-
Mike?
We've had several meetings, let me go this way. We've had several meetings with various neighborhood groups on this site. This is Laner. Okay, we've got all kinds of names. This is Laner. This is the site itself, MLK. We are proposing to do two single-family gray stones in this area. We have had some discussion with the neighborhood. We've never had a determined vote. At the last board meeting, we basically said, if you don't want us here, we won't be here. However, we have gone through P and Z, we have done a lot of work on this, and we know that by us moving forward, it could help the neighborhood. The upper portion of this area would be dedicated probably to Smokey Row for parking, because they need that, so.
Which is not before us tonight, but it is.
No, it's not before us tonight. But it's just, it's just that. If the neighborhood does not approve the gray stones, then we would guarantee that there would be some other form of housing there, so that we would have that tax base and we would have the income from housing.
Could I ask this question? Have you not gotten the neighborhood approval on this one?
We have not gotten board approval. We have a letter from the neighbors who live directly to the left, giving us a letter of support on this.
Okay, well, usually we ask that we get a neighborhood approval, but Christine, do you have a motion here that you'd like to?
Listen, there's a little, there's been a, there's just been a number of meetings, and I think-
Oh, I know, I have that.
I'm Jack Hatch, 1623 Woodland. We went to, there are two sites in Sherman Hill that have gray stones identified, one on High Street, in which the neighborhood has supported that. And then there is this area. We went there a week ago, and I made the commitment to the neighborhood that we would not do anything on that site without their approval. And yet, there is discussion between neighbors who now want the gray stone there, and others who don't want to do anything because there's some other conflicts or some other issues regarding the commercial element north of us. So we made a commitment that we would not do anything in that, on that site, without their commitment, which means that we're going to have to come to some conclusion. And if there is no, if there's, if the conclusion is, leave that area as it is, we will. We don't need that site for our development for the Iowa Finance Authority.
But it's my understanding that you already have it, you've gone through the process, so you want to complete the process.
That's correct. I mean, right now, it's my opinion that there is too many unknowns, and too many people have too many different opinions on it, so we want to keep it in here, just so that we've gone through the process. But I made the commitment there, and I'll make the commitment today, that without the association agreeing to what goes there, we will not proceed with that in any form.
Thank you.
Other speakers?
Mr. Mayor, council members, David Schlarman, fifteen oh three Center Street, Sherman Hill. Ryan Howell, the current Sherman Hill Association president, had to leave town to a family emergency, and asked me to provide input to city council. As of one-one-two thousand eleven, I no longer serve as treasurer on the Sherman Hill Board of Directors, but I have been party to many discussions on this specific agenda item. The board's specific concern is in relation to number six only, so the other ones we don't really have a concern with, which is located north of Lainer, east of MLK. The Sherman Hill Association is asking the city council to defer conveyance of the attached property to potential investors for a period of thirty days, at which time we feel all parties will have had sufficient time to provide input to the process. The board is actively engaged in dialogue with numerous stakeholders with respect to this property, to include Hatch Development, Smokey Row, adjacent homeowners, the Sherman Hill Action Plan Committee, and the Sherman Hill neighborhood at large. Unfortunately, the Sherman Hill Board of Directors has not been included in all discussions regarding this matter, and feels it needs more time to act in the best interest of the neighborhood, whatever that may be. Acting in the best interest of the neighborhood may mean that the board comes forward with a potential bid on this property. The Sherman Hill Board is not authorized to make a bid without a meeting of the membership at large, which could feasibly take place by the end of January. We've not been able to have that meeting. The Sherman Hill Board last met on Wednesday, January fifth, at which time Mr. Hatch indicated to the board that he would withdraw his bid on this specific parcel. Following this, the board sent a letter to the city council requesting an action referral. Hopefully, you all received that. If not, I have a copy here.
On this item?
On this specific item, yeah.
I did see the letter, but I'm not sure that it's here.
Yes, I have the letter from, and that's
Can we have this?
Yes, yes, you can have that copy. That's from Jeff McComber.
Move to receive and file.
He was the outgoing president. Excuse me. That was from Jeff McComber, who was the acting president as of December thirty-first, two thousand and ten. The Sherman Hill Board needs additional time to react to ongoing negotiations. Our goal is not to hinder progress, but balance social and economic concerns regarding this portion of our neighborhood. In summary, I just don't feel that we've, you know, we've had enough time to digest everything. Unfortunately, I think there's been a lot of stakeholders in this. The board, of which I was a member of for the last several years, only received kind of formal notice that there could potentially be a bidding process for this land sometime in November, early December. So we haven't had a lot of time to act. We've been meeting with various parties on this, but we just feel we need a little more time, and that's what we're asking for today. I also, and this, you know, from my own personal perspective and having been on the board, one thing I would ask the council perhaps in the future is, especially in a neighborhood like Sherman Hill, which is a very prominent neighborhood, that if some land were to come up and is going to be conveyed by the city, that someone send a letter to the Neighborhood Association to that effect, because we did not receive notice. And it's my understanding that the city's not required to do that, but I would strongly encourage, going forward, that to avoid these last-second delays, that you keep the neighborhoods involved sooner than later. Thank you.
David, before you leave the podium, do you have a date specific that this group is going to meet?
Well, I think we can meet with the membership in January, probably by January thirty-first, I can say that. And then, whatever time, I'm not sure what the next council meeting is, in February. We could potentially defer to that date.
Frank, I'd like to comment on that in all
Please. I just, we sort of need a date specific. I'm sure Mr. Hatch is kind of looking, are we moving forward, are we not, and what is it so
Do you know the council dates?
Yeah, I'll address that when I make my, when I take my action, David.
Okay, so we just kind of need a date specific to move forward on this.
I'll address that.
Okay. Another speaker.
City council members, my name is Meg Bauer. I'm a tenant just south of the parcel at the corner of Atkins and MLK Parkway that Hatch is seeking to purchase. I came here today to sort of address the issue that I, my husband, and my brother, the two other people that live with me at this address, have with the development of this property just north of us. There are, there's ourselves, and then there's another multifamily house at the end of what used to be Old Twenty-second Street, the frontage road that runs in front of our house and in front of the property that they wish to purchase. There is an issue, especially during this time of year, with all of the snow and the snow removal process, and the five or six car owners down at the end of the street from us trying to find parking and trying to negotiate this rather narrow piece of street in front of our house. So there's just, we have a safety issue with more families moving into our street. We also feel that, after having seen the designs for the single-family housing that they plan on putting on this property, should they get it, don't really fit in with the architectural style or feel of the surrounding neighborhood. As far as I'm aware, from just personal experience, I'm not in the business by any means, but there are very few other row houses similar to what they're proposing in this neighborhood. And third, we just haven't had enough time to look into our own finances to see if purchasing this property for the seventy-five-hundred dollars that Hatch is offering is even feasible for us. We just purchased our house in, I believe, September of this year, and it took us from January, the beginning of this year, to be approved through any sort of housing financing. We finally went through Wells Hargo home mortgage after being turned down by Neighborhood Finance Corporation three different times. So getting into this piece of property was, our current house was difficult enough for us. So to be put into a position where we would have to go and try and risk our credit again seeking financing to buy this piece of property, which we were interested in, we just hadn't seen the need to find financing for it this close to us moving in. And I think we only had notice the night before Christmas in the mail, and we had until January third to find financing, and that just simply was not enough time. So I suppose what I'm asking for is possibly the city council holding off on making any decision whether to sell it to Hatch today.
Question for you. We talked on the phone. Did you follow up with Mr. Hatch?
Yes, I did, and there was talk about setting up a meeting, I believe, last Monday, and I didn't hear back from anybody once I contacted them. So a meeting didn't happen between us.
Mr. Bergman, could you talk about the process again?
Could we also clarify, which item are you
Yes.
discussing?
I'm not entirely sure which.
What's the address?
Roughly, where is it?
It's at the corner of Atkins and MLK. It's on the east side of MLK.
It would be basically
Would it be number two?
I think, I think it's number three.
Number three?
And actually, our street address is ten fifty-one MLK, so I wonder if perhaps that might be mislabeled.
It's north, it's ten fifty-five and ten fifty-nine.
So what you're pointing to is the lot that we're talking about? And where's your house from this lot, right next door?
Yes.
You're to the south of it?
Yes, immediately to the south of it.
Okay. Now, she would have received notice, though, at the time of P and Z as well, correct? Because this has gone through P and Z.
And I spoke to Eric Skinner.
Yes.
Okay.
Apologies. I spoke to Eric Skinner in P and Z, and he advised that, at the time, since we had a lot of, we were still in the process of moving into our house at the time, he said that there was even a chance that the city council would decide not to vacate the property anyways, and that this hearing that's happening today would be the most important of the two to make it to. So at the time, we didn't take any action on it, even though we were aware of it.
But that, your statement about receiving notice Christmas Eve day is not completely accurate, because you did receive notice at the time of P and Z.
Well, actually, it is accurate. I should have clarified which notice we received. We received notice that this hearing was taking place, that the hearing that we received notice of back in November had gotten a positive response, and that the city council had decided to vacate that property.
Okay.
Mrs. Hensley, you asked a question concerning process.
Yes.
And what we have is a twofold process here. We are vacating and conveying, and frankly, if you end up taking one or two items out of this, you could go ahead and vacate so that you ended up reserving just really the question of whether or not you chose to convey, whether Mr. Hatch was still interested at that point, Senator Hatch, excuse me, Jack, and
He's Mr. When he's in the council chambers.
I guess so.
That would be the nice thing you'd say.
In any event, there is a vacation ordinance, which, there is a request waived, as I understand, and then there is the conveyance. There is a publication requirement. The publication was made, as is whatever is shown here, the proof of publication will be published at some point. It meets all requirements of Iowa law, as far as we're concerned.
Okay, thank you.
If I could take just an extra moment, I'm sure I'm far over my five minutes, but my property, and I think this property as well, sit in what is referred to as a dead zone. Neither the Drake, neither the Drake community nor the Sherman Hill community
Neighborhood associations?
Exactly, thank you. It's been a weird afternoon. Neither Neighborhood Association in either Drake or Sherman Hill have authority over this area. There is no Neighborhood Association for this immediate area, and I'm not entirely familiar with the boundaries of where one begins and the other ends, but we fall in the in-between, so there is no, I'm sort of the voice for that immediate neighborhood. There's no other, there's no Neighborhood Association to vote on whether or not they approve the building of this project or not.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have one more speaker, I think.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, William Lilis, three seventeen, suite three hundred, three seventeen, six Adams, suite three hundred. We're appearing on behalf of Smokey Row, and as Carol has mentioned and Jack has mentioned, we stand in support of what the Hatch Development Group is asking as far as this property that would be south and/or adjacent to the Smokey Row property in part. We have an objection to such a delay, because what we have committed to the neighborhood group and to the Hatch group is that if and when, as an adjoining property owner, we would own any of that property, the triangular piece, we would also make that commitment that the south end of that property would be used for housing, for redevelopment, whether it's to Hatch or to any other property owners. We've given the assurance to the Hatch group and also to the Sherman Hill Association group, those people who are in that organization, that we would work with them. We have a plan new to development that would go to the planning zone and commission them back to the council, I think probably in March. And, believe me, we are working to see if we can have a resolution as to the use of this property, or a portion of this property, for a parking lot on the north end that we would like to have, and then also the south end for some type of housing. But to delay this, we sure do not want to be in the way of the Hatch Development request, and we can assure the council that we would work with them and with the association to see if we can get a resolution for a global look at the entire piece. We welcome questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask Carol a question as a follow-up?
Sure.
Carol, I don't know if this is what you're going to speak to, but do you have any additional information regarding the property at Atkins, regarding conversations?
Yes, I did speak to Meg Bauer. She did explain they were in what she called a dead zone, and there was no Neighborhood Association, and she was basically the voice for that neighborhood and for that property. I did tell her that I would introduce her to city people who would help her form a neighborhood organization in that neighborhood. Basically, I was going to talk to Mary Niderbach about that. I did not hear back from Meg regarding that, and I did not hear back from her after that initial conversation.
Let me ask this question, then. Based upon that property, can you tell me the sensitivity towards timeline?
We are, we have to submit our IFA application in March, and so we have everything going before Board of Adjustment on January twenty-sixth. So we would ask that if Sherman Hill needs to have another meeting
Be done at the twenty-fourth meeting.
Yeah, they basically had a meeting in December. We were not invited to, but they discussed the project, and I got an email back from Jeffrey saying that they had not come to any conclusion on it. We did go to the meeting in January, and everything was just getting so confusing that, you know, we just said, we don't know what we want to do, but we have to find sites. We need twenty-six sites at a minimum. We would like to have thirty. And we basically, at that meeting, did not give them an opportunity to vote. I will say that, because Jack said, you know, if you don't want us here, we won't be here. But then we decided that we needed to move forward with this, to get the PUD and to keep things moving. If they do not want the gray stones there, we will help support the neighborhood on whatever other type of housing they need, but they need housing in that area.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Carol. Are there any other speakers? I'm going to ask before this gentleman steps up, are there any other speakers that are lingering the audience that are looking for an opportunity to jump up at the last minute here and
And you apologize for that.
Okay, this is our last speaker.
Brad Argo, nineteen twenty-five Lainer Street. Actually, this house right here, so I'm the next property owner next to the proposed lot. Sorry, this is my sketch, and I'm not a very good artist. We have had a lot of conversations with Smokey Row and along with Hatch Development. One thing that I would say, just to kind of sum this up a little bit, Lainer Street, I've been there five years. We went from getting no attention for the longest time to all of a sudden a lot of attention all at once. There are a lot of moving parts, and that is kind of why I think discussions have taken so long. I think I would have liked to have seen things move a little bit faster. I'm sure the council, I'm sure everybody involved would have liked to see this move a little bit quicker. Essentially, what we're looking for is this potential lot, that's question number six, was looked at as potential for homes having to be moved there to, in order to satisfy parking lots, businesses, and that's pretty much the only reason right now we're really reserving that lot. Essentially, we feel that we can come to a conclusion on this very soon. However, we still have to keep that available for potential land for homes having to be moved to, I guess, allow Smokey Row to be able to have the parking lot that they would like to have. So again, there's a lot of moving parts to this, and I'd like to see this move faster, but if we could just be given a little bit more time to kind of smooth a few things over, I feel it would be in everyone's best interests.
Okay, I think I, I'll, can I make a motion and then
Can I ask one other question?
Sure.
Brad, would you put your little
Yeah.
design back up there again? Are you talking about, I see two houses, or two little pieces on your thing there, one and two?
Those are what we call the twin homes. They sit very close
Are you talking about the movement of those places?
Potentially.
How large are structures are those?
One's about seven hundred and fifty square feet, one's about nine hundred. They're both pretty small homes.
Those are the ones we discussed a couple weeks ago, right?
I just want to make sure that that's what he's talking about.
And there may be, again, other places we can put those homes. We just And there may be, again, other places we can put those homes. We just haven't got the land right now, secured a land for those to go if they do potentially need to be moved. We did lose a home that was sitting right here, and that is why the neighborhood's so sensitive about these homes, which to a lot of people aren't worth much, but they have been there since, well, before 1891.
Are those homes in the historical district? Are they in your neighborhood?
We are currently not in the historical district.
Okay.
It's kind of been a process as well. We're trying to get that grouped in as well, so...
All right. Sorry. Ms. Hensley?
What I would like to suggest here is, and I agree, Brad, with your summary. I think it's very accurate. There have been just... You cannot believe all the meetings that have taken place on this. And it is complicated, and there are a lot of moving parts because of what Smoky Row wants to do. And that's coming up. That's going to be later. I think it'll actually get before the council the end of March. It's still got quite a lengthy process to go through to get there. But they have all been trying to sit down and to work out and address all of the related issues that are out there because of all these moving parts, because they know all of this that's coming up in the future, and they're trying to deal with it all at the same time. Having said that, I'm not convinced, in all honesty, that Sherman Hill is ever going to get everybody on the same page, just from what I've seen. I don't know. I hope that that happens because I think everybody's working in good faith. What I would like to do tonight is to move item 53, 1, 2, 3, 5, and make a motion that we move and waive the second and third readings on item four and six, which are the two items that have been discussed tonight.
Yours four or yours three?
Or three. Sorry. Okay, so I want to move items 1, 2, 4, and 5, waive the second and third readings. Items 3 and 6, the two items that were discussed tonight, that we approve the first reading, not waive the second and third, and have it come back. And I'm going to say January 24. The only reason I'm doing that is because I want them to know the answer before they go to Board of Adjustment. And David, you guys have had ample time to have discussions about this. So I think in fairness to Jack and all the discussions that have gone on and the amount of time that's worked on it, there have been a lot of opportunities for discussion. Can we do that legally, Bruce?
Which? Can you vacate only part of what you have?
Right.
You can do that. You could if what you intend to do as to parcels 3 and 6 is ultimately either convey to Senator Hatch or to Meg Bauer. If she ends up coming in... If your intent is to convey, why don't you just vacate all of it and then just not convey?
Okay.
And just hold your conveyance back.
On all six items or just the two?
No, no, just on those two.
Okay.
That way you'll have your business taken care of, except for the two parts that you really have left to go.
Okay. That's my motion.
That's what I would do.
So you're going to vacate all and convey all four, just not the two?
Yeah. Not convey three and not convey six.
I believe we're not conveying the triangle one that's closest to ML King that would be used for the Smoky Row.
That's correct.
Can I just ask a process question on that? Would we sell the entire parcel or convey it to Hatch and then they would sell or lease? What's the anticipated way in which Smoky Row would have access to that? Are you going to buy the north half? What's that?
Jack Hatch, 1623 Woodland. We want to make it clear that we don't want to proceed with that triangular piece without the neighborhood agreeing on all pieces of the puzzle. Whether or not, if there's an agreement with Smoky Row for the upcoming parking lot and they need part of that land, that's fine. If the neighborhood agrees with it, that's what we'll do. I see ourselves as a placeholder for that land right now, and so that we would continue to have the number of discussions. And we've... David is partially right. The Association as a board has only met twice, but there have been numerous meetings of members of the board at their discretion to bring people in to talk about this in smaller groups. So the Association has known about this, and we're trying to facilitate that. At the same time, there's a complication with Smoky Row of wanting to have a PUD so that they... And that kind of zoning can at least lend them to greater discussion about what they want to do. It's my intent to assist in the parties. I'm kind of got multiple personalities here. As a developer, I want that land, but it's not necessary for my development for my IFA proposal. As a state senator, I want the neighborhood to continue to flourish and develop and grow. As a resident, there's an enormous amount of discussion that has to continue about what might happen to that land. There's just ideas floating around, which eventually they'll all be landed. We will all come to a conclusion, but because there was this attention to it, I think the neighborhood does need some time. I agree with the motion that will give us the time in the neighborhood to come to a date certain so that everybody has that ability to find a resolution to all of this.
So if the neighborhood comes back and says, for whatever reason, they have not reached resolution, are you comfortable with continuing it to the next council meeting, then?
Correct. And I will probably, at some time, not include that in my IFA proposal. Right now, I am not because I don't have approval from the Association.
Okay.
We are trying to secure other land to give us the mass that we need to make a good proposal to the Iowa Finance Authority, because I think our proposal in infill housing is a really dramatic kind of proposal. This is important to the neighborhood, and it could help in our proposal. But right now, I've told the Association, I'm not putting houses there until they agree to it. I have maybe four to six weeks if they really want to include it, but I don't have to. So I think we're kind of forcing the issue here. I think, in every case, I think that's probably the proper way to do it. I appreciate the time certain. I think that's real important for us.
Okay.
Okay. You have a motion?
Yep. Seven yes.
Takes us to item 54. Item 54 is on the proposal to create an airport authority. Council Communication, number 11-016A, is the first consideration of the ordinance above. And I'd like to have the city manager bring us up to date on where we are on this. And if any council members have any comments, we'll... Let's include those as well. Ms. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. What you have on the agenda this evening is first reading of the ordinance that we create an airport authority. Unless you would waive these readings, there would be two other readings after this evening. And also keep in mind that this is not a final action by any means, because subsequent to this, you have to consider a 28E agreement, which will have a number of stipulations and contain provisions about how this would work. There's a lease. There's other steps that have to be completed before this would actually happen. But tonight's action is important because it is a reading of an ordinance that would actually create the authority. I did want to mention, and I'm not going to go through all the details because you had that presentation before, but at the last meeting and since that time, council members have mentioned two or three items of significance about this. And I wanted to just touch on those and indicate the information that's been provided. The first one is that it was asked of us by the mayor to outline some of the current aspects, the status of the airport, if you will. And in the blue letter, you'll find discussions about operating revenues, passenger employments, cargo employments, aircraft operations, fares, and so on. That is our attempt, in fairly short order, to provide a snapshot, if you will, of the airport as it operates today and some key information about those operations. That can be embellished, and additional information could be provided as you like. The second suggestion was made at the last meeting, I believe, by Mrs. Hensley, that we include a statement of goals or objectives or some measures that the council could look at and the authority, if you approve it, could look at as well that would guide where they would go. And in the blue letter on page 4 of 6, you'll find a discussion about that that includes such things as lower fares for passengers, an update of the master plan, a realignment of airport management staff to improve efficiency, increase and maintain cash reserves, reduce airport costs per in-plane passengers. So that is our attempt to outline for you the types of goals that could be established as you create the new authority. And last but not least, there has been considerable discussion about the nominating process, that is, whether the mayor would make the appointments to the new board, whether they would be council members as you do now. In either case, please keep in mind that all appointments to the Airport Authority would be subject to review and approval by the council and action by the council. But I think your concern has been about that process. And I must say, you've all been really great at making suggestions and open to different ways to do this, which has been very helpful in trying to iron out a proposal. What's before you this evening in the ordinance, and it's outlined in the blue letter, essentially came from discussion at this table at your last meeting, which establishes a pool, if you will, of candidates from which the mayor would then select. In effect, each council member would nominate or select a couple of names. They would be submitted or established as a pool, if you will, and then the mayor would select among those and submit a recommendation back to you. I hope that approach is successful and acceptable to council members. I think it goes a long way to providing a nice balance in the selection and establishment of the airport board. I'd like to ask the city attorney to provide some additional comments in terms of process, but just to remind you again, you're just doing first reading tonight. There is a separate process, of course, to approve, final reading of the ordinance. And then there is, and this is an important point for me, a 28E agreement that would outline various provisions and stipulations about how this whole relationship would work. One of the key provisions of that 28E agreement, and there are many, is one, it assures that the union protection that's provided to the current airport employees would continue. And secondly, it establishes that the Airport Authority would continue to buy services, if you will, from the city and would continue to make pilot payments. So the fiscal impact issues would be addressed in that 28E agreement as well. For me, that's a very important point because the airport is an important part of our finances. We do that all in accord with FAA stipulations, but it is an important provision. And my point here is the 28E agreement, which you will have to consider at a future date, would address all of those issues as well. So you're starting the process this evening. There are important steps in the future. And as I say, I'd like to have Mr. Bergman talk a little bit about that process and the timing of it going forward. Of course, anything else that, Bruce, you'd like to add to it?
Sure. To begin with, the real expert here is David Free, who is an assistant city attorney, working primarily at the airport. And David, if you end up having anything to add, feel free to step up. The... I think from the summary that Mr. Clark provided that you already understand that if you were to vote, even if you were to waive readings tonight, which has not been suggested, that this would not be the final action. In fact, there's an effective date that is stated in the ordinance. The ordinance becomes effective upon its passage and publication, but the section 22-1509 states that the authority board will assume its duties upon approval by both the city and the authority of a document transferring control of the Des Moines International Airport to the authority. So that has some time to go. As Mr. Clark mentioned, there is a document, there is actually a couple of agreements that need to be entered into in order to give this thing life. One of those would be a 28E agreement. A 28E agreement, in this case, I'll just call it the operational or functional thing that includes within it the provisions for the employment of the people that end up running the airport at that point. The other document that's referred to in section 22-1501 of this proposed ordinance deals with the transfer of aviation facilities. And I think that it would go without saying, but I'll say it anyway. The ordinance would require that the city transfers airport land to the authority by a long-term lease. There is a lot of property at the airport. That is a real understatement. And it will take some time to get that assembled, as well as to put all the details on something that we've outlined and has been presented to you at workshops, at least one, and discussed with you, I know, before. But it will take some time to put the flesh into these agreements. And in addition to that, I would want to point out that, as was mentioned to you before, this is a facility that is largely operated under authority of the Federal Aviation Administration. And it will take some time, and you will not want this to really move forward to a conclusion, but it really couldn't realistically without their blessing upon this. Now, a preliminary approval has been given, as I understand it. There were meetings with the Regional Administrator's Office in Kansas City. We know from past history that authorities are something that are... Many cities have moved to and that the FAA generally favors them, but they still would need to take a look at and make sure that they were comfortable with what was here. So it's going to be a several-month process. I can't tell you exactly how long, but it wouldn't surprise me if it were to extend till, say, April or thereabouts. And it could be a little bit further past that, depending upon the pressing business with the FAA and how long it takes us to submit something to them.
Bruce, can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
On the FAA and going through and having a preliminary approval process
Right.
at this particular point, on the other end of it, say, at the end of the five years when we're reevaluating, has this worked? Is it meeting the criteria that we establish or we agree to now? What would be the process that FAA would ask us to go through if we decided we didn't want it to be an airport authority again?
Well, I'm going to give you, again, what I think is the answer, because Mr. Free and I have discussed this a little bit. And David, if I leave anything out, please step up and edit. But right now, many, and you would say much of, most of, by a long shot, the capital improvements at the airport are made with federal dollars coming through the Federal Aviation Administration. So one of the most important things to them is the grants under which we receive the dollars. There are many terms and conditions, but just call them conditions in the grant that we currently have to live with, follow, and abide by. It's not a problem. We do that. If you decide after five years, Mrs. Hensley, that, you know what, this is just not working out to your satisfaction, I would expect that the FAA would want to go back through and take a look at it and satisfy themselves again that the city was in a position to assume the position then of the aviation authority in any grants that were outstanding at that time. And I think that would be the principal thing. There may be other things that they would look at, but that would be the most important thing. And again, I would expect that it would take a few months. There could be some other things, council members, that if you reach that point and were really dissatisfied with it, there could be some other things that you could do in the meantime, having to do with, for example, replacement of board members at that time if you were not satisfied with the operation.
Thank you.
Mr. Smithy, if you wouldn't mind, I think that, for me, I think we all are continuing to discuss process, and I think that, frankly, I think we're all looking at improved transportation opportunity in Des Moines for our citizens and all those in this region, anyone who might use it. might use it. And I, as we think about measurements, to me, outcomes are more important or the most important thing for doing this. And I know that they have talked about significant advantages, and all the board members and others have said that, and we've gotten a couple of letters that say the same thing. And so I think we're excited about advantages and an improved airport transportation system here. How would you, and maybe you could help us as we move forward to finalize this, you know, should we measure the number of flights that go in and out of Des Moines daily, employments? Where are these people coming from? Do we have any way to check the addresses either by, you know, so much care about their street and address there, number? I'm more interested in, you know, are they coming from Des Moines or West Des Moines? Or maybe we're starting to get some new folks that are coming in from Cedar Rapids or maybe even kind of trickling down from Minnesota or Illinois that because we're doing some things, and I know that we've made some improvements recently, Frontier, you know, and a couple of other low-cost carriers. And we know also we've been sort of in the midst of a recession, but I'd like to have some things that we could use to, as outcomes, that you're looking for and the board is looking for and the new authority would be looking for, as things that you're going to try to achieve under this new leadership model and show us, you know, sort of where we're going. So we do have a good way to measure, as Mrs. Hensley and I've talked a number of times as this discussion has begun and as the rest of this council. I think that, you know, we all want to see a good model for city operation. What do you envision would be some of those advantages? And you have a long history of working with an authority and quite effectively. So I'm hopeful that whether you want to espouse all those this evening, but maybe we could work together to try to put those together so the council understands what we're doing, where we're going, what great goals we hope to achieve, and how much better it's going to be doing it in this fashion.
Certainly. Excuse me. First of all, Mayor, the ability to retrieve information on addresses where people come from lie within the airlines, not the airport. That's proprietary information, and it's very difficult to get. I was frustrated from that for many years. At Omaha, I knew where basically people were coming from because I happened to know some of them, and they were coming as far east as Iowa City, the Cedar Rapids area, but I only knew it because of the personal relationships. But the airlines won't share that information, and it's obvious for competitive reasons. However, some of them, let me just quickly do this. Some of the goals you want to take a look at are all encompassing. It's not only the improvement of airline service, it's an improvement for, for example, the corporate aviation, general aviation, cargo, all these things together. For example, we've got leases coming up for our fixed base operation. That's a long-term lease. It needs to be revised. There's four or five buildings there that obviously need a lot of work. They need, probably all of them need a new roof, certainly new paint, and to be updated so that we can do new leases. And those typically run about 25 to 30 years. As you know, we've been doing modifications in the terminal facility, but I will tell you, if, for example, we were to get a major low fare carrier putting in high frequency, I have concerns right now how we would handle it. You might even see, as I said to one of the staff members today, I could maybe anticipate seeing people lined up on the sidewalk because the impact is that great. Obviously, we'd do something else to mitigate it, and we'd have to do it very quickly. So I think the improvement in parking facilities. This year, we're tearing down the old post office, which has some issues, and creating about approximately 300 parking spots. They're real close to the terminal. It's convenient for the public. We've recently made some conversions for rental cars for visiting passengers from out of town to get quickly into their vehicles inside. We want to continue to improve things like that. But basically, what we're really there for is to satisfy the public concern and provide the facilities for aviation that's warranted and to make you very proud of the airport. That is basically what it is.
Okay. And maybe we can reduce those to some specific goals as time goes along.
Sure.
One question I would have, and we used to do in downtown Des Moines, is we'd look at our parking garages and we try to figure out what counties some of these people come from. While it's not, you know, a true test as to where they actually came from, it would give you an indication. Do you go through your parking garages and lots to see where these cars are coming from?
Not to my knowledge. Sometimes the rental cars can throw you. We tried that, for example, at Omaha years ago, and they tried it in Kansas City, and it was distorting really, the car might belong to someone that doesn't live in that particular area. So the counties weren't a good indication. What a good indication is-
Would somebody come park a rental car in the garage?
They could be coming, the car could be owned, for example, like my daughter. She works for a company that owns that vehicle. It's licensed somewhere else, but she lives in Omaha.
Okay.
And things like that. It all distorts the information you're trying to acquire. The real test of that is the total passengers in a year, when you're totally looking at passengers. If you're increasing, for example, let's assume for a moment that we're going to get Southwest Airlines. If we do, I can almost tell you that the passengers are going to increase probably 30% to 40% very quickly, and I mean quick. And so there's a benchmark there, but it's not a certainty at this point. They're still going through SEC requirements and so forth. But that would be one that we would be putting a lot of effort into
Sure.
Because that is a game changer. That makes a difference. I think, frankly, having observed this airport for all these years from a distance, that Des Moines is clearly becoming on the threshold of what I would call a world-class city. The improvements are just incredible. I think now you need the airport to go along with that to make it all come together. And I think an authority focused on the ability to just do exactly that can make it work.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that?
Sure, please.
Mr. Smithy, wouldn't there be the ability, as individuals are leaving parking lots, when you go to a store and they're doing marketing analysis, they ask you for your area code?
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't that be a way that we could track individuals, just asking them for their hometown and tracking that through the software system some way?
We could try. There's been airports, for example, that did photographs of license plates. The problem is, and snow, they get all clouded up and you can't read them. But there may be a possibility to do that. Now, remember, we've got two credit card lanes, and anymore, people use those quite often. And they swipe their credit card, no time spent, and they're gone. But I need to look at a consultant that's been doing some of that lately to see if they can make it work. We could never make it work there.
Maybe I could just interject there.
Sure.
I do think there are ways with sampling surveys as people
Do a survey.
Enter or exit the airport to do a sampling and try to get a feeling for it. It wouldn't be perhaps 100% accurate, but if it was 90% accurate, it would give us a sense of where people were coming from. And I think that kind of thing, if that's a will of the council, that I'd be happy to work with Don and his staff to see if we could do something like that. You can't have it by next week because there's a sampling process involved in it.
No.
But that kind of data can be collected through sampling techniques and provided, so.
And Don, I agree with you. I think that Forbes would agree with you, that Des Moines is becoming a world-class city. And occasionally, they even say we're number one.
Correct.
So I'm convinced.
So am I.
All right. Well, anyway, we have a motion, we don't have a motion. We have a proposal. Are there any folks in the audience who would like to speak on this item this evening? I would ask, we have one, two, it looks like. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thomas Hayes, Business Manager, CPAC 5806, Meredith Drive, Sweet E. I talked at the last meeting and made a couple of comments about being able to keep accountability. I have done some research, and there have been some areas where an authority didn't turn in their financial reports to the city council. Now, I would imagine that would probably be a big problem with you guys. But as Christine Hensley had asked that question about FAA, the answer that I got was basically, get rid of the board members and start over. So that tells me that the FAA probably would not give it back to the city. So you need to take time to think about that. He didn't come directly out and say, yeah, the FAA will take a look at it. And it's not that I have a huge problem with the authority, it's just that the oversight portion of that you need to take a look at. And then I have my other issue that deals with the workers that are out there. You know, you have the possibility, and it doesn't seem like a lot to you, but there could be five to seven, maybe 10 people that lose their jobs over this turn into the authority. From the fact of the matter is that they might want to bump back to the city because they're going to lose a lot of bumping power and promotional rights if this goes to an authority and they stay with the authority. So I find that something big to look at. We have lost plenty of people from the city through various different actions and have put people on unemployment, and that'll be another five to 10, maybe, people that could end up on unemployment again. And I think that's pretty rough on the economy when somebody gets unemployed. So I think that's something that also needs to be looked at, too. And I'm not saying that they haven't been generous enough to sit down and talk about what we can do to keep most of the people there, because we have. If I told you that, that would be a lie. But I have concerns when it comes to the bumping power and the promotional. Most of those jobs out there are actually promotional through the city to get those jobs. So that'll be going to all the employees that work for the city right now. Then you have the fact that employees can bump back, and the lower people will get bumped out of their jobs. So I want you to take consideration of that. Thank you.
Mr. Turner, did you want to make any comment regarding-
Yeah. Apparently, I was not sufficiently clear earlier. I cannot really foresee a situation under which, under the law that exists now, that the FAA would end up in a position where they said, no, you really can't retake the authority and make it a city department again. What I intended to convey, and apparently didn't well enough, is that it would take a period of time to get that done because we have a number of grants, and frankly, working with a federal agency takes time. But my expectation would be, and I can't think of any reason, that they would not ultimately do that. It's just it would be a period of months. So, sorry for that.
Mr. Manager, you have a couple of comments yourself?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. The relationship between the city and the Airport Authority would continue to be a very strong one because, under what's proposed, and I mentioned earlier, the 28E agreement, through that agreement, the Airport Authority would continue to, in effect, buy services from the city. We now provide HR and finance services, IT services. That would continue to be the case, and it would be one of the stipulations in the agreement. I mention that because it's not like this would be cast off and you wouldn't have anything to do with its management. You would still be involved in providing services and thus really able to make sure that some of those basic things about its operation would be maintained at a high level.
Mr. Coleman?
I have a, I have a number of questions or comments and a suggestion maybe to make.
We have four speakers, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you looked at me. I'm sorry.
I did, but I thought maybe you wanted to make a comment on this. All right.
Marty Mock, 2701, Arthur. And when this came up before Christmas, I've had a number of conversations with neighborhood people that kind of saw the program on TV and was wondering what's going on. I've had not only phone conversations but coffees with things. The comments I'm making today are ones that are both of concern and questions, and trust that through the reading process of the second and third reading, that maybe some of these can be dealt with. They're not casting aspersions upon the existing board. I think the board's done a very good job with the airport. Actually, I'm still trying to figure out why we need the authority. If the jobs, if the board's doing a good job and retaining so much that we're retaining, I still haven't seen yet what an authority is actually going to accomplish for us. Because we have a new airport administrator who knows what he's doing. He actually is sharp. The authority provides, the board provides advice to that individual. So to me, I'd still like to know, what is actually the authority going to do that a board cannot do? That's one of the first questions I have. As I went through the blue letter that's provided to you, I do have some questions in regard to that. I think the greatest concern that I have and other people have had in this conversation is the issue of transparency. One of the things that's said in the blue letter is that the authority will act as a policymaking entity and hire an executive to oversee day-to-day operations and all aviation staff. The city will need to assign its interests in all agreements, leases, and contracts to the authority. In a time we've had scandals, even close to home here, one of the things that concerns the taxpayer is the best use of our dollars in taxes. And if we start taking the transparency out of the process, in other words, I assume the authority will then approve to themselves all contracts existing with the airport as part of their authority to do. Therefore, we will not see as a city any of the contracts, how they're being let, anything like that. Again, this is not casting any aspiration, any negative comments to the existing board, but it's the fact that you just have some small group of people making all the decisions for, what is it, $60 million to $80 million facility that's actually has all the ownership presently by the city, and we're just going to lease it all to them. The other question I have is, does this authority have the ability to generate debt? In other words, if they want to go and do a $30 million improvement to the airport, who pays for that? Does the authority actually generate bonds for that? Does the city generate bonds? How does all the improvement's done? And does the taxpayer end up having to pay anything through the debt that's generated through this process? I certainly tip my hat to Mr. Bergman that he would know probably what the FAA do, but we, in honesty, don't know what the FAA might do. They have a tendency to like authorities because of the nature of the authority process. What happens if the FAA does not like giving it back to the city for whatever reason? We simply can't take the thing back if, in the taking back, the authority, the FAA says, ah, no, we don't want you to do that. We don't think you can do as good a job. And then we're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place with what we do with the decisions at that point. I am also concerned with the makeup of the board. Going from a seven-member board back down to a five-member board, there's an assumption here that a citizen, a common, everyday citizen, cannot be on this board, that they have to have some kind of special expertise, when in reality, sometimes our very citizens that are neighborhood leaders or labor leaders or other people, which are not in this list of potential board members, can make some of the best decisions there. When you have professionals that are doing that, they have a tendency to look only at the aspect of the, as the airport, as a business, not as a service to the community. And so I'd like to suggest that we look back to a seven-member board and that you encourage at least one person that comes from the neighborhood movement, that can speak just for the common, everyday person, that takes their family out to the airport, has experience trying to get onto a plane and going through all the things they have to go through with kids. That might be a very helpful kind of informed person that will look at the airport in a different perspective. And I think we really critically need to have a person as representative of our workers at the airport. We have many other places where people, either in the union or workers, that actually take one of the positions and provide a very important aspect of what it's like to work at the airport and bring those concerns to the table. So I'd like to see that the board be, actually go up to seven members and that you consider not just this very exclusive type of group of people that you put onto the board. One of the other things about that is that business leaders have a tendency to look at the priority of what's the most economical way of doing things. Again, the city's providing a service, not running a business. And sometimes we have to look at it as a service to the community as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Marty.
Well done.
Yes, sir.
Jim Fromm, President of the Municipal Employees Association. Those were some good questions. We'll look forward to hearing those answers from you in the next month or weeks as we hopefully proceed with the second and third readings of this. I just wanted to give you an update. We spoke, or I spoke at the last council meeting regarding this. We are proceeding or progressing with talks with HR and are moving forward fairly well with the, what would be the new contract with the association or the authority, I mean. And with Mr. Turner out today, there were some details that we were going to work on and hopefully have cleared up today, that we did not get cleared up today. Our main concern has been, and still is, the preservation of our workers' benefits and wages, and their civil service rights would not be continuing with the creation of the authority, and that's been our biggest concern. So what we're doing is, we're drafting some language now that we'll be working with to help ensure those rights, that they will lose, or hopefully won't lose, once they do not have civil service anymore, if this proceeds and is carried through with. So I just wanted to give you that update, that we are working with you folks on this. It would be great to get people standing on the sidewalk, I think. I think that would be an exciting level of participation for people at the airport, instead of those people driving to Omaha and Kansas City to get on a plane. So just wanted to give you an update on the MEA's position on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. I do hope that somebody compiled those questions, and maybe just on top of the good questions that Marty asked, his question about debt going forward. Also, is there any change to the debt that the city's taken on, capital improvement stuff that's funded through the, you know, how does that happen, looking backwards at the debt that's already just-
Can I try a short answer to those things? The debt, the debt at the airport is not general obligation debt. The city taxpayer is not obligated to pay that debt. Whatever debts incurred is an airport revenue debt paid off by revenues generated by the airport. It doesn't really touch our finances. In fact, as a general rule, the revenues at the airport are segregated entirely from the city, so there's not a co-mingling, and the taxpayer is really not obligated to pay fees or revenues or debts at the airport. But we'll provide all of that in writing, that's the short answer. I'm looking at Don and see if he has any additional information.
May I ask Rick a question pertaining to that?
Yeah, yeah.
If they were to incur a huge amount of debt, and then we had another economic crash, and the revenue wasn't there to pay it back, wouldn't the city ultimately be responsible?
Well, we would make sure, Mr. Moore, that the city taxpayer was not put in a libelous position. They would have no ability to issue a debt that pushed a debt upon the city taxpayer without the council's consent. And by the way, they would be subject to the same kind of underwriting requirements as the city is, and having bonds reviewed and raided. I just, I can't imagine that they would take an action that would somehow adversely impact the city's finances. They would not have the capacity to do that.
Rick, you mentioned the importance of the 28E agreement that would be the next step after an ordinance was passed. Some of the questions that were brought up today caused me to say, ask, when would that process unfold?
Well, it, actually, I was sort of waiting to see what council's action was this evening. Once that's approved, between David Free and Bruce Bergman and other legal staff, and Don Smithy and his board, and me and some of my other support staff, we'll draft an agreement and get it back to you. It really has to be put in place before this whole program can be implemented. So despite the fact that you'd approve the ordinance, the thing can't really-
Yeah, that's the impression I've had, but then I was sitting here thinking today, well, a 28E has to be agreed to by both parties, so the other party would have to be created in order to finalize a 28E.
Right.
So it would really happen after July 1st? Is that when we're thinking that the, when do we think that would take over?
July 1st. But essentially, and I'll ask Bruce to say, but the shorthand version of this is, I think we have to get your, the council's blessing on the ordinance, which is what you're considering first reading of tonight. Then a 28E agreement has to be drafted, there has to be a lease document, we have to get FAA approval, and then we land back here at some point for your formal approval, and you have to actually enact the authority. But all of those steps have to be completed before this thing actually is implemented and happens.
Well, and so just on a legal basis or whatever, can you tell me what the trigger is, where if we don't get a 28E that's signed, that's what we want, the seven members of the council? What's the trigger that dissolves the ordinance that created the authority, without having to go back through FFA and all that?
That's why we have the city attorney.
It's even easier than that, because actually, the authority board only assumes its duties on approval by both the city and the authority of a document which transfers control. So you don't approve it, so you don't approve it, and it never gets control.
Okay.
You're not satisfied-
I just wanted to make sure, I figured you had been nifty there.
So this is essentially the initial step to get the thing going.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's what, that's what we've been trying to say. This is your first step.
I understand that, I just wanted to make sure how it got, how the first step got undone if we didn't do the rest of it.
Yeah. Can I add one other, just a little thing? There also have to be board members to vote on this.
Right.
Okay, so there have to, the appointments have to be made. And if I were a board member, and we have at least one out there today, I would want to make sure that I had an opportunity to examine documents before I voted on them. So there will be that time, too.
Well, just maybe three quick categories of comment, and for us to think about, one of them's a suggestion. I've always been intrigued by the idea and supportive of it. One reason, honestly, is I think our city management staff has to be laser-focused on the most important issues and problems that we have, and I think developing authority, where one piece of our portfolio, the airport, which is not as important to me as other things, it's good to segment that off and find a different hierarchy for that, especially if the council's still engaged in that through the appointments of that authority. I think, I think we have to be more and more focused. In terms of it overall, I had a question today, I sent you a note, Rick, about this, and that is that some airports, especially when they transfer to an authority, have contracted police or their own internal. I'd like to see the 28E retain the requirement that it's the Des Moines PD that provides the security, and I'm sure we already have an agreement for how that's funded and paid for out of aviation funds. But that would be an important piece to me, and somebody asked me about that, I thought that was good. The other issue to me is something that a lot of people have asked about, and that's transparency and communication. I'm pleased that the mayor will be able to make the appointments, that's a line of communication. But it seems to me that it would be great, and I've not brought this up to anybody at the airport, but that if we could consider as part of the ordinance, a ex officio role for the city manager or your designee, so you get all the materials, you're invited to all the meetings, and it's kind of an official, non-voting, you're not a member of the authority, but you or your designee are there, and that we'd write the ordinance so that you are responsible for communicating with the council as our employee, you meaning the city manager, to report back and keep us apprised of key things. It's an idea that I have, and I'd like you to consider that and talk to the airport about that before we go to the next steps. But I, as we push it a little bit further, it would be nice to have a accountability mechanism, and as we've learned, not always do our appointees maintain that accountability on other boards and so forth. That's all I have.
Anybody else?
I'll go ahead and make a motion-
Okay.
-to approve the first reading only, because I think that we still need to have some ongoing discussion and get answers to the questions and have it come back. I think there's been good discussion at the council table tonight. Just one reaction to some of the comments that Mr. Mock made was, is there a way that we could look at some advisory groups that would work with the airport? I know that's been done very effectively with the, and maybe there is, and I'm not aware of it, but it's been done effectively, I think, with DART, with people that actually utilize the services, and they have, they've really become very valuable, as we've been making decisions that relate to budgets and routes and things. And so I would just ask that, maybe we look at that to provide additional information there.
It's a great idea.
So, especially in light of us looking at a smaller board arrangement.
I guess in response to one of Marty's questions is that, you know, supplied to us tonight with our information, we had an audit report from McAdrey on the airport, and we still maintain that information, and it'd be fed back to the city, I would think, on a regular basis, wouldn't it, Rick?
Sure.
So we'd still have that information coming back.
And there will be reporting requirements in our agreement, as well as a requirement to have at least one face-to-face meeting per year. There could be more, if you'd like to do that, between the council and the authority.
And again, the blue letter has kind of the baseline. I know the mayor and I've talked about that, that's the baseline, but we would be looking at the criteria-
Sure.
-quantifying that and looking at that criteria in a little bit more detailed manner, so that it comes back and we're making an evaluation.
Mayor, I have some comments.
Yes, sir.
First of all, it indicates in the blue letter that they'll honor all employee-union contracts through 2012. There is no indication here, and there's no guarantee that in 2012, they don't just say to heck that we're going to contract out everything. There's no promise to anybody about that. And we have a lot of dedicated and loyal employees out there at the airport that are walking on pins and needles. I was informed that Mr. Smithy met with some of them last week, I applaud you for that. I think you need to continue meeting with them. I don't understand why it took so long to meet with them. I understand you call them some fairs, but I think you need to talk to them a lot more, and I think you need to sell those employees on this. This airline and fares, I appreciate having this, but when I look at this, if you look at the 14-day fares, we're pretty much kicking Southwest Airlines' rear end on 14-day fares in Kansas City and Omaha. It's the lockup fares that's where we're losing, and that suggests to me that it's a business issue for the fares, it's not your common, ordinary, everyday citizen. Then when you look through this ordinance, the makeup of the board, the appointment, the terms, I think we need to make that 50% male and female. I do believe that we've got a state law that's going to be coming into effect that requires that anyway. We might as well, if we pass this, that should be installed in there, we might as well start now. Section 22-1505 really bothers me, I don't quite understand it, it makes it look to me like the authority would have, be able to adopt or effect law. They will not be an elected board, and I think that ought to be changed to, anything they propose has to be adopted by the city council. I don't think that an appointed board should be able to effect law. Under reports, I believe that the report should be at least twice a year, unless requested by a majority of the council for a special meeting on reports. And on the dissolution, I think we need a guarantee from the FAA on that, that they would allow it to be dissolved at a future date. If we've got to have their approval to make an authority, why can't they put it in writing now, that if five years down the road, there's a problem, they want to take it back, they would allow it? And I would like to point out that under dissolution, it says, "And the city shall assume all debts and obligations of every nature of the authority." So if it were dissolved, we are going to be on the hook for any debts that they have. And that's all I've got.
Mr. Manager, you have the notes?
I do.
Okay. Anybody else?
Five yes, two no.
Appreciate everybody coming down. We've, on a five-to-two vote, passed the first hurdle on the proposal to create the airport authority. We will continue to have discussions, and as requested by the council, to answer questions that were posed by citizens and also other council members. So appreciate everybody's input this evening. That actually concludes our city council meeting this evening. We have already done the approval items and the extra items, and so I'd like to have a motion adjourned, please. Got a motion adjourned? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes the same, we said adjourned. Thank you all.